Seven o'clock, let's get this thing going. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in whose vote liberty and justice are all.
Okay. So, um, basically, the, um, directions are, there's an exit here and the one you came in. There's, for some reason, any indication we need to get out of here, follow Ron, he'll always be the first one out, so.
Right.
Just follow Ron. So with that, um, we're gonna follow, we're gonna do the, uh, in accordance with the rules and procedures that we agreed to at the first part of this year. And we'll start this with the approval of the February 5th meeting minutes. Anybody have a chance, everyone have a chance to review them? Any comments, questions, or a motion to approve?
Moved.
Moved by Adrian, seconded by. Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Seconded by Tim. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One abstentions. You can't hear me in a microphone? Oh. Alright, legal notices, uh, we have a continued public hearing, PB's 1002-24 preliminary six lot subdivision for the Alexander Shear subdivision tract. Do we have anybody online for that one? Anyone online? If you are, you're muted. Anyone online? Can I hear you?
Could be online tonight.
Anybody online that needs to be unmuted, because I can't hear you? Okay, we'll turn it to Ron.
Well, the, uh, the applicant sent us a, um, email asking for a sixty day continuation uh, of the seeker, uh, findings and determination. Um, then he sent another email saying that he sent off to Albany a request for a jurisdictional determination which takes ninety days. So, um, we have a resolution before you continue, uh, your determination and finding, uh, for ninety days.
Okay, ninety days sounds reasonable to me. Anything else? I'm good. Anything else on staff? Anything on the board? Nobody still online wants to talk about this one? Go ahead, well, you might as well. It is a public hearing, so.
Uh-huh. This is, um, Tommy Grove, Calhoun Road.
Right.
How the last meeting, um, wasn't there something about the gas company stuff that they were willing to move the gas line?
Well, there's some, there's some issues there. It needs to be engineered and the applicant needs to pay for the moving and it's not the gas line itself, it's it's an anode or something else, but it's part of that whole thing. And that hasn't been, as far as I know, engineered and approved by natural fuel gas yet.
Talk about the big four foot diameter gas line, correct?
No.
Type line?
No. We're not talking about that. We're talking about some equipment that they have attached to the line. I think it's called an anode that is not in the proper place to allow them to do what they wanted to do. They have to engineer the moving of that anode to some other location and then pay for that movement. It is not a gas line movement at all. It's just that anode. Gas line, well, that's where fuel gas wouldn't allow it anyway, but, uh, it's the moving of a device that's attached to it. And that hasn't been completed and there's a couple other issues that have to be dealt with like sewer systems as well as the, um, wetlands, I believe. You got a wetlands, you got the sewer system and you've got the natural fuel gas thing. So there's a few things going on with this project. So, okay? Nope, that's, I believe, and staff, I think I was right there. And nobody's correcting me, so I must be somewhat close to being right. Anybody have anything else? Board, do you have any questions? Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution for a ninety day extension of the, um, for seeker findings and determination is significant? Motion by Tim, seconded by. Adrian. Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Hold on.
Just to point out that this is being continued to May twenty first.
May twenty first.
May twenty first.
Oh, yes.
It'll be a continuation of public hearing to, on May twenty first, yep. Okay, now clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Peter Sousa.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, that takes care of that. Okay, now we get into, there's no new public hearing. There's no public meeting action items. And we'll go right into other board actions. The first item, PB This is the Blazy, um, final site plan for Lot Two for Scott Blazy. Okay, anyone online want to talk about that one? I think I saw Scott there. He's on mute, Scott.
Uh, this is Brian Marks, too, from Marks Engineering.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
So, I, I'm here to answer any questions. I got your resolution, I looked through it. Um, I think the clarification we wanted to provide was uh, the, uh, the landscaping plan requirements and we had, uh, provided some seed mixture specifications for the steep slopes, um, to to, in order to stabilize the embankments after grading is complete, um, and they're, they're not, I should say, steep slopes, they're not uh, excessive, uh, slopes that are prone to significant erosion, um, they're two on one, three on one slopes along the edge of the driveway, it's not sheer cliffs, uh, we're gonna plant those out with a steep slope mixture, um, that'll, that'll stabilize that. Couple of things that we had talked about in our response letter was the, uh, the soil needing of a soils report or some type of testing to, for the town to uh, be comfortable with the, uh, the, the bearing conditions of the, uh, new driveway. Um, we, right now, it's under frost conditions, it's, it's hard to, uh, establish any type of a, um, CBR rating or, or a load bearing rating of, of the soils. Um, it would be best to, like we mentioned in our responses, to to test this, uh, once the grades established for the driveway. And, and typically, when we do parking lots or other commercial sites and stuff like that, we would just proof roll them with a loaded ten wheeler dump truck, um, and that's just witnessing for deflection, uh, which is the same weight as an H20 loading, uh, it's a pretty simple test. And that's what I recommend we do after they establish grades of the driveway, we will load it with a, with a ten wheeler and prove that it, it'll handle the, the loads that, that an emergency vehicle may put on it under that condition.
Okay, okay, we'll turn it over to Ron.
I drafted a resolution and I'm sure it was sent to Mark and, and others, uh, I haven't heard anything, so I think we're ready to go.
Okay. Dan?
Uh, yeah, we talked about the soil conditions, obviously you can't test them right now. Um, and I, I believe that we're ready to move forward, uh, with the understanding that of what, um, Brendan just mentioned would be the acceptable route and we would need all that done before COO.
Before COO, okay. Alright, and, uh, any other staff have it, and Tim?
Um, no, I mean, we, that's how we proof roll our roads is with a loaded ten wheeler.
Right.
To make sure it's a stable base, so I think that's a
Safe, safe call.
Yep, good call on that.
Okay. So that we have, anybody in the audience want to speak on anything? Okay? Board, Tim?
Yeah, the, the agenda has one number and the resolution has.
Right. Zero two oh one, or zero two oh one is the proper number, correct?
Zero two oh one.
Right, the draft resolution was in there. Yeah, I caught that, too, it's like.
What's going on?
Adrian? Okay, with that, do I have a motion to waive the reading and the applicant said they're okay with everything else on the agenda, I believe, right Brendan?
Yeah, yeah, with the, I, I, um, sorry, I'm Mr. Reminger, um, I, they, uh, the, the resolution does say that we're gonna provide a landscaping plan, uh, the one that I read. And, um, I, I don't, you know, we have that information on the drawings as they're submitted now, so we don't intend to submit another landscaping plan.
Oh, that's okay, guys. Okay, so we'll scratch, uh, condition number two. So with that, uh, correction, um, and do, do we have someone to waive the reading and approve this resolution without number two?
On a reword number two, does it still have to be on there?
Oh, it's already on the.
It's on there.
It's already on the, the drawing, the plans.
This is just to make the, the next meeting anyways.
No, this one is the final site plan application, no.
No, this is just giving it.
That's right. Okay, this is just putting it on the next meeting, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry. So this is just going for the next meeting, um, with that, do I have a motion to accept this resolution to move this to uh, scheduled public meeting or final site plan approval? Moved by Adrian, seconded by.
Gina.
Regina, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Aye. Peter Sousa.
Aye.
Give me the votes.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number twenty twenty five zero one zero one. This is the, the George Gateway Drive final site plan amendment determination of information submitted, it is this is a new one, so that everyone sees this, this is something we haven't done before, is partially complete for scheduling of a public hearing, just want to let the board know, this is a, we're trying this out, see how it works. So with that, um, do we have anybody online wants to speak for this one?
Yeah, I'm here tonight, uh, Mr. Reminger.
What, what's the name?
Uh, Brennan Marks, the Marks Engineering.
Oh Brennan, okay, you're back up again, okay. Tell us a little bit about this one, so, and again, we're only determining this determining this to be partially complete and there's a list of items that need to be completed in the resolution.
Yeah, so I, I, we did provide a response letter about to, uh, the comments that we received, um, which was the last time you looked at this as a completed application. Uh, and there was six items, um, and we responded to each one of those individually. Um, the number one was the, uh, the landscaping plan needs to be provided, um, and we did provide a landscaping plan, I think that's rec, that's noted in the resolution. Um, second request was the, was drawings for the building, um, we did provide those, that's recognized in the resolution. Um, lighting plan, we have also provided that, that's been recognized. The, um, other one that we, there's a couple more that, that are, um, still kind of outstanding or maybe unclear. Uh, one is the, uh, the, the removal of the temporary topsoil stockpile, um, which was number five, we we actually, it's a temporary stockpile, so it's not permanent, right? So, and in the construction sequence, it says removal of all temporary measures, um, so we'd like to the board to recognize that as being complete. And then also right in the middle of, uh, the site plan on the top section, there's the calculations that were requested for proposed and existing and previous surfaces. Um, so those are provided on the plans also. I just want to note that those two items, five and six there, have been, um, addressed on a revised.
You've got it, you do have a note on there, it says that all temporary whatevers will be removed.
That's correct.
Okay.
And what's the date of that?
And what, did you put a date on that one? Or was it at, uh?
It's the, uh, they submitted uh, plans that were dated, I believe, is, uh, let me just check here.
Right, but what is, what is the proposed removal of the temporary topsoil piles, is that part of, uh, CO, uh, CO, yeah?
CO would make sense, yeah.
Okay, so it's at COO?
This would be a CFC certificate of compliance, right?
Right, right.
And I could place that for a building, so, yeah, that's CFC.
EFC?
Yep, and that last note, this is removal of temporary sediment control measures once the entire site has been stabilized and authorized by the town, basically, so.
So basically, you've already done what's in this resolution anyway.
Right.
Because it's already on the thing. And then you've got some on the backside, drawings. You know, there's six on the backside, I assume you'll either do those or already have done those, so it sounds like the resolution's in good shape.
Yeah, so it, I just don't want to, the board to be confused with it, calling, being called partially complete, we'd love to continue moving this forward, so.
Well, we plan to continue moving forward. As soon as the staff says, as soon as the staff looks at all this stuff and says everything's complete, then it goes forward. That's why we're trying this new partial. Because if we didn't say partial, we'd have to say it's not complete and you'd have to come back in another month, so we're trying something different here, we're trying to be a little more flexible with a partial knowing that you can comply with these fairly quickly and get, we can get it into the agenda cycle.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, we're trying it out on you.
I like to be a guinea pig.
Okay, Ron, you're up.
March nineteenth?
Nineteenth of March, it's called.
Nineteenth of March.
What the resolution says.
Okay.
As long as you guys deem it.
Yeah, so this year is gonna go on the nineteenth of March one. Brendan, so. Okay, Ron, you're up.
Well, I'm good, dude.
Good, Dan?
Got everything.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna review everything, uh, and then, like I said, the resolution shows it coming back on the nineteenth. I meant to mention the previous application, that one was coming back on the fifth.
Okay.
So.
That's coming back on the fifth one, Brendan, that first one, the Blazy one.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Paul, anything?
Yeah.
Tim? Engineering?
Yes, sir.
You have, um, folks who talked about, there's just parking? In terms of paving and parking?
Again, this is for getting it back on the agenda, so we're not actually looking at the plans, no, not till not till the nineteenth of March, then we'll look at all of that type of thing.
Yep.
Okay? Board have anything? And again, this is just to get it scheduled. Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution as presented? Motion by Tim, seconded by. Adrian, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item up, uh, PB's twenty twenty five dash zero two zero two. Um, do we have any, this is the T and M Properties, Western New York, and again, we're just night, well, again, we're just trying to make sure everything is complete, we have a resolution accepting it for public uh, hearing, uh, for April seventh. Do we have anybody to speak on this one?
Yep, Link Sweetrock with BME.
Okay. Um, like I said, the resolution's pretty simple, we're gonna refer it to the, um, county planning, we're gonna make it, it's a type one, we'll start a coordinated review, we'll, um, we intend to be the lead agency and we'll get things started on it, pretty simple. Do you have anything else to add?
Um, no, I just had a procedural question for Dan or Ron about
Go ahead.
the dates on the hearing, so basically, um, because of the, the thirty day statute, we wouldn't be able to do the public hearing on March nineteenth, we have to go to April seventh. Is that correct?
It's scheduled for April seventh, yeah.
So the March, March nineteenth, you would deem yourself lead agency, though, it looks like?
Right, right.
Okay, because we, I think when the PRC we talked about, we weren't sure about the timing of getting on for the public hearing on the nineteenth. But because of the timing, it's, we can't do the public hearing till the seventh, right?
Right.
So that's, that was my only question, I'm good.
Okay, it's in a resolution under items one and six. Any other comments?
And if you read item eight, it talks about how that will commence the secret review.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Ron?
Ron?
Dan?
Good to go.
Paula? Tim? Engineering? Anybody? Board?
That one will have a public.
Legal notice for a public hearing.
Yep.
Yeah, they'll have a public hearing. Okay, do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution as presented? Moved by Regina, seconded by Adrian, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Link, we got that one taken care of.
Thank you, have a good night.
Yep, night.
Thank you.
PB twenty twenty five dash zero two zero four. It's the preliminary site plan determination of application completeness for Scott De Hollander's, um, single family dwelling. Um, yeah, corner of Aiden Holt's. Okay, this is going to be, the resolution is an acceptance is being adequate, type two action, it's an exempt action from the county planning board. So, uh, anybody have to speak on this one? Okay, we turn to Ron. Pretty simple?
I thought Scott would be on, yeah, um, originally, we sent out an applica, uh, draft resolution that was recalled uh, because of clarification on the uh, length of a lot frontage on County Road Eight. Um, doesn't meet an area variance, so, uh, that had to change everything that was in that resolution. And you should have gotten recalled resolution on this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Okay, we're good on this, then?
I think so.
Dan?
Good.
Paula? Tim? Engineering? Audience, board? Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution as presented? Motion by Tim, seconded by. Adrian, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Peter Sousa.
Adrian Douglas. Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item up is PB twenty twenty five dash zero two zero five.
Yeah, it's March fifth.
Yep. This one here is De Hollander Design, it is the Lot R Three Preliminary Site Plan. Uh, acceptance of the application is complete and ready for scheduling. Resolution says it's adequate and it's set the public meeting to be held March fifth. Um, the type two action is also exempt from county planning, anybody to speak on behalf of this one? Hey, Ron?
Now, this one's pretty straightforward, I don't see any issue here. The only thing that there may be a comment on is a, um, uh, and I'll leave that up to Augie whether we need a, uh, drive or pull off lane for fire trucks.
Okay.
Because of the distance back from the highway.
Okay. Alright. Dan?
Good.
Paula? Tim? Engineering?
What's that?
Wasn't that over a hundred fifty twenty, a hundred and forty four?
Five hundred, five hundred.
Okay, board have anything? Have a motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution. So moved by Adrian, seconded by Regina, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Peter Sousa. Adrian Reminger.
Aye.
Yeah, we're all.
We're all ayes on that one.
Right now, we're all ayes.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, next item up is PB twenty twenty five dash zero two zero six. This is for the Matisse subdivision track lots one through four, this is the preliminary subdivision acceptance of the application being complete. This resolus, draft resolution said that it's adequate for public review, it's a type two action and it will be referred to the county planning board, do we have anybody to speak for this one?
Yes, good evening.
Evening.
This is Nick French, I'm with Schultz Associates.
Nick, welcome.
Uh, didn't have much to say, I was just here if you guys had questions or concerns.
Okay, seems pretty straightforward, Ron?
This one's pretty straightforward.
Good, Dan?
Good.
Paula?
Sam.
Tim? Engineering? Audience, board? Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve this application?
Yeah, we got a second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by.
Nineteenth.
Thank you.
That has to go to county, so that goes to your second meeting.
Okay, clerk, please take a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Peter Sousa. Aye. Adrian Douglas.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item up, PB twenty twenty five dash zero two zero seven. This is the special use permit renewal and final site plan approval for Lot Two. This is, again, the acceptance of the application being complete for scheduling a public hearing. The resolution says that it is adequate for public review. It is subject to County, Ontario County Planning Board review. Um, if the engineers can complete the requested report and town staff has, can review it, we can get it to the next Ontario County Planning Board, so the sooner the better on that one. And, um, assuming everything is good, we're gonna plan for a March twelfth, I believe, on that one.
March nineteenth.
Nineteenth, I'm sorry, I read March twelve? Okay, March nineteenth.
That has to go to county on March.
Okay, it's gotta go to the county, so, who do I have to speak on this behalf?
Same gentleman, Nick French, from, from Schultz Associates.
Nick? Anything special on that? It's a pretty straightforward resolution.
Pretty straightforward, uh, I'm actually filling in as a I'm a survey project manager at Schultz, this wasn't my project from the get-go, uh, Mr. Bob Hatch is on vacation. I think it's just.
How dare he?
Yeah. He picked a good week for it.
There you go. Hope he's somewhere warm.
The way I understand it, we're cre, we have to go through the special use permit again, since we're creating a new lot that that cell tower will reside on.
Now we'll let Ron clarify that one.
Yeah, Nick, let me clarify here. When the special use permit was issued originally years ago for the cell tower, at that point in time, the planning boards were and allowed to set a time period for a special use permit. Since then, reports have held that once you issue a special use permit, uh, unless there are extenuating circumstances, uh, you can't put a time limit on it. Now, uh, what we have here is a cell tower that was permitted for a two-year period and it had to be renewed.
Uh-huh.
It wasn't. The two-year period expired. So now you have a cell tower out there that continues to operate uh, without town approval. So we need to get that corrected. We've asked for, um, information from the cell tower, American Tower, that they have a valid FCC permit and we're waiting on receiving that information. Hopefully we get that because if we don't, I don't know how we can, uh, prove a cell tower that we don't have a valid FCC permit to operate. You following me?
Yep, yeah, so I was just, I was a little off target. But, yeah, it's basically a, a valid permit needs to be in place, is the bottom line, and there's not one right now.
And that's correct.
Yeah, I would recommend that, uh, you guys work with staff, make sure they got the documents they need, so we can move this forward for the March nineteenth meeting.
Yeah.
The other thing, Nick, is because we're considering this a new application, each one of those twenty-some criteria have to be documented, how you're going to meet them in order for the planning board to approve the special use. the special use permit. So you can either start looking at what was originally in that permit or amended as appropriate.
Ten-four.
Like I said, work with staff, and they'll help you through the whole process. Okay, Dan?
At this point, though, just to wrap up, I, no action at this point in time from, from me?
Well, you guys need well, the applicant needs to get some information to the town.
I sent Chris copies of the two draft resolutions, the previous one and
Yep, I saw those.
And, and you see what's required, right?
I didn't get to review them in detail before the meeting started, but
Okay, take a look at them. If you have questions, call me or Dan.
Gotcha.
Hey, Dan?
I'm good.
Paula? Tim? Engineering? Audience? Board? Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution as presented? Moved by Regina, seconded by Adrian. Adrian, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please. Aye. Okay. Next item up. Twenty twenty-five dash zero two zero eight. This is MDM MAC Properties Farmington. This is the Myers RV site, final site plan amendment, acceptance of the application being complete for scheduling of a public meeting. Resolution says it's adequate. It is a type two, and it will be referred to the county planning board. And this puts it on the agenda for
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth of March. Okay, do I have anybody to talk about that one?
Good evening, Alex Hammering with Costage Engineering. Um, I'll save any uh, formal presentation, I think, till the public hearing. Uh, we've reviewed the resolution, and we're set. Thank you.
Perfect. Nothing from Ron, Dan, Paula, Tim? Engineering? Audience? Board? I have a motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution as presented. I have a motion by Adrian, seconded by Tim, I'm sorry.
Come on, Tim.
Losing my mind. No, I'm losing my mind. Um, clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Ian Souza. Adam.
Aye. Okay. Last item on this agenda is PB zero, or, I'm sorry. Twenty twenty-five dash zero two zero nine. This is the special use permit amendment for the Myers RV. This is a resolution saying that it is, um, application not accepted for proposed amendment to the special use. What do we got here, Ron?
Okay, uh, you have a special use permit.
Yes.
That was granted with a number of conditions
Okay.
by this board for Myers RV.
Correct.
We have now a annexation of land
Mm-hmm.
that special use permit area.
Okay.
Which we have looked at. We're well within the conditions for the total number of units. Uh, he's proposing the access internally. Um, he's got an overall concept plan which he, I believe. Alex, when are you gonna submit that?
Can you say that again, Ron?
That, that overall plan that you submitted with the, uh, proposed drive aisles?
Yeah, we submitted it electronically. We can get you hard copies whenever you would like.
Whatever test staff needs.
Yeah.
They should have it.
Yeah, so I, basically, since this land now uh, has been added to the original parcel.
Correct.
And all of the conditions of the original special use permit still are in a, uh, enforced. Uh, I don't see the need for an additional special use permit on a portion of a site that is now part of the overall site. So I would
Okay.
suggest that the town board re- return the, uh, application fee and, uh, move on.
Okay, Dan, how do you feel on that one?
Um, I'm in agreement with that.
Okay. I guess I wouldn't complain, Alex. So, so with that, we still, do we still need this resolution?
Yeah, it directs me to
To do that, okay.
Refund it.
Anyone else on staff, audience, board? I have a motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution as presented. Motion by Tim, seconded by Regina. Any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item up is the notification of Keith Minard the second's Town of Victor program manager for a planning board scheduled hearing on a twenty-four lot subdivision on our border and into Farmington, if I remember right this up. Do I have anybody to speak on this one?
No, this is
Okay.
This, this is being sent
Okay, I know.
Victor to us
Okay.
For us to provide them comments at their public hearing coming up in March.
Okay.
Uh, on any concerns that we have with the project, because it's within five hundred feet of the municipal boundary. In the Journal of Municipal Law, section two thirty-nine, end to end, there's those given to the
Right.
clerk of the adjacent municipality, which it was, and this is and Paula made copies of this, sent it on to you. Now, we can draft, or we can discuss any of your findings on this uh, application. I mean, it's it's right there on the municipal boundary line.
Didn't you say that some of it actually was over into the Farmington property?
So, it shows that there's projection for future development into Farmington.
Okay.
But it's not, we do not have an application in front of us at this time.
Okay, so, this one is all on the Victor side? I mean, if you guys want to draft up some comments for us, I mean, I didn't see anything really
Where was, where's the line there, then? I thought the road was split, the two towns.
Nope. It doesn't have. The line is straight, the road is bendy, it's then we'll tell you that Farmington, you go into Farmington, we go out of Farmington, and it doesn't follow the road line.
Okay. Oh, we're, if you guys have some suggestions or recommendations on it, we'll think about it as well, and, uh, come up with some items for that, the next meeting.
Well, I, I think we need to do it before the next meeting, because they want comments by March fourth.
Yeah, so it's before your next meeting.
Okay.
So what I would suggest that we do is Dan and I and others take a look at this.
Okay.
Some pretty steep slopes over there.
Okay.
Um, some of which involve sites in both Victor and Farmington. Um, and we probably ought to let them know that we're not happy about private drives because of the limitations on emergency access to dwellings at those locations.
Well, and if any of the board has any comments on it, let me know, and I'll send it on to the staff. You know? So, uh, yeah. Do that, and then I'll sign it, and we'll get it out, okay? Okay, other than that, now we're on to open discussions. Ron?
Okay, um, where are we at here?
Open discussion, yours.
Um, basically, we're, we're starting to see, um, interest in the Farmington GLN site.
That's interesting. What kind of interest?
Well, it's a large commercial site. Uh, we're waiting for more detail
Okay.
before we can, wanna do any kind of a review. Uh, but it is something that, uh, apparently, the realtor has had discussions with uh, Lefroy and company on, and, and we're waiting to see what they're talking about as far as a project. So hopefully, I'll have more information for you in the near future.
Perfect, and good. I'd just remind them to get with RG&E, make sure there's enough utilities to provide their needs, as we know, we've had some issues with that. Hate to have them get started.
Yeah.
And then stop, because they can't get the power or the gas, whatever they need.
Right, as far as the former Whitestone site.
Yes.
Also known as the water park.
The old water park, yeah.
Um, they have gone back to, um, Asaros Associates as their engineer, and Chauncey is going to be working on that. Uh, we're waiting for them to give us a submission. Hopefully, they, uh, give us something to work on.
Is this back to the original plan?
Kind of.
Okay.
Um, there are some differences. I don't want to elaborate on them, because they don't have anything to
That's fine.
use as a basis.
You just know that, since this was a uh, incentive zoning, they're gonna have to go back to the town board. We certainly want to see it. It's an IZ issue, so, okay.
Yeah, you definitely will. Um, and I continue working on the, uh, local laws. Um, we will be introducing those. Uh, Regina, let Matt know that at the next meeting, they will start working on formal adoption of the Park and Rec Master Plan. So, it's something that we'll be working with MRB on to do the secret and, and coordinating with county planning and others. Um, the town did submit a grant application to the county for the infrastructure project. Um, Governor Hovell has awarded one project to each county. Uh, depending on whether or not the project uh, is needed to support additional housing. Our project is the, um, Beaver Creek Horse Main and the Mertensia Road sewer line uh, to submit, we've submitted it. Um, we're looking at approximately eight hundred units uh, between Farmington and Cannadega. Um, we'll see whether the county's housing ad hoc committee, you know, supports uh, that kind of infrastructure improvement to sustain uh, the approved of Addicks Landing in Mount Monarch Banner as well as the two hundred and sixty-eight, is it two hundred and something? Uh, project there on the Taylor property on the south side of Town Line Road and the New Michigan. Keep our fingers crossed. We'll see, we'll see where that goes. Uh, we continue to work with the uh, Farmington Fire Department. Um, look researching grant applications for uh, improvements to their facility. Um, Evian Hudson from the H2O group that did the, uh, hazard mitigation plan for the county has given us a list of about five different programs that funds could be, uh, um, obtained from, and Bill Davis and I are working on, on, uh, following up on that. The, um, other things that are going on in, in the area, we have uh, will be submitting at the next, not this meeting, first meeting in March. The, um, draft local laws for Park and Ride, the draft local laws for rental, short-term rentals.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Dan threw some more stuff at me while he was laying in bed, wondering what the hell he could do to analyze me, so he, he did. Um, and be looking at what seems to be potential issue, and that is uh, the interest of using these, uh, shipping containers for storage units. And how to regulate them.
Hmm.
Yeah. Um, and then there's a, some other things that we're working on as far as updating town code, the subdivision regs. And we're waiting tomorrow night, maybe we'll get lucky and have the Ag Advisory Committee say, okay, we've heard enough. We're ready to move forward with the conservation and elderly district.
Good.
We'll see.
Cool. Dan?
All right, um, obviously, you noticed tonight, the applications are starting to come in a little bit quicker.
Yes, they are.
So your next two meetings are obviously gonna have some more, uh, work for you to, uh, do on them. Uh, with that being said, uh, we are looking at the submitter dates.
Right.
And looking to adjust that, and I'm hoping to have that at your next meeting, after I can review the dates. Um, and possibly have an amendment to the approved schedule that's out there. Uh, just to give staff a little bit more time to put together everything. I will tell you that Ron, uh, did a phenomenal job. I was upset.
Yes, he did.
Uh, but he was able to magically put this all together for you guys for tonight. Um, uh, so I have to give him a, a lot of credit on that.
And he kept smiling the whole time.
Well, and it, it was interesting, because it all sort of had to be done on Friday, because we were off on Monday, and
Yeah.
So it, it definitely put a lot of stress on that situation, so.
And staff did reach out to me, we talked about it. We talked about moving it up because right now, it comes in ha- at midday on Thursday. They like to get it out by the weekend. That's a long time for, what do we have here? Twelve resolutions, or whatever we had?
And
And, and that's a lot of work, even if, and, and honestly, these were the easy ones. They were the, they're ready to be accepted, let alone if they were the full-blown um, other ones. So, yeah, we had, we had some real issues there, so. Yeah, it's so, moving back a few days or something, I think, would be great, so, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, it's, that's gonna be under review, so, um, but, uh, yeah, and again, Adrian, I appreciate you bringing to my attention some of these signs that are out there. Obviously, you're gonna see a lot more signs go up right now, because, uh,
Yep.
um, and we don't have a ton of them, so it's good to know that we have ones that we can take down and put up in other places, so.
We have three of them right there in this neighborhood.[1754.56]